The New Britain Board of Education. Providing students with a high-quality education.
Good evening, I'd like to call the New Britain Board of Ed to order at 6:07. And start with the Fudge of Allegiance. And Stockton, can you lead us today?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Kristen, can you call the board?
Mr. Merrill Gay.
Here.
Mr. Nicholas Mercier.
Here.
Ms. Dr. Violet Hunesten.
Here.
Ms. Monica Dawkins.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Listrow.
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker. Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
Ms. Gail Sanders Connolly.
Here.
Ms. Tina Santiano.
Here.
There we have a quorum. And let's now have a moment of meditation. Okay, and do we have anybody for public participation tonight?
We have one phone number that's called in that ends in a 12.
We have somebody on the phone who, phone number ends 12, who'd like to speak for public participation?
They just hung up.
All right.
I don't know if there's any problem here.
I believe they'd spoken up already briefly, so I don't think it was an issue with that. I don't, I don't know. They may call back.
Okay. All right. So let's move on to new business.
Motion to go into executive session to discuss item 2A, which is ratifying the Local 51 contract between the New Britain Board of Education and the Federation of School Administrators, with Ms. Sarah Attorney Engler and Mr. Kane joining us.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will go into executive session.
I am on the line. For some reason or another, I was bounced out, but I called back.
Okay.
So.
We just go back into session.
Yes, we need to come back into session. So we are now back in session. Let's hear from the caller. If you could identify yourself, and you've got three minutes.
Well, my name is Charlie Smith, and I have some concerns about the bus thing.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Tell us a little more.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead and tell us a little bit more.
Oh, okay. Well, my concerns begin with, I understand reports are written, they're submitted to the supervisor for the Consolidated School District, I want to say his name is Richard. But what I like to know is, from seeing and hearing from the students, they make such statements if they don't care if they're written up. They tell other students, "Oh, I've been written up 25 times, nothing happened." And then, the other issue is, the students are disrespectful to the drivers and the other occupants on the bus. It's like there's no true bus etiquette, even though you try to explain to them what's required of them, being an occupant on the bus. And I do understand that space, seat, and house are the major requirements for transport to these students, yet they want to stand while the bus is in motion, and you tell them not to. They're extremely loud, and they distract the driver, and it prevents her from hearing, or him, from hearing the dispatcher on the radio. And then on top with the mask, the middle school students and the high school students are the major violators of that. The elementary, they're pretty good. You know, the kids are, I mean, they're better than those in the higher grades. And what's happening here is they're putting everybody at risk on the bus. So someone can tell me what happens with the reports when they're written, and what are the consequences? Because there's no sense in writing these reports if there's no consequences.
If we get your email address, we'll get you an answer on that.
Okay. My email address is S.M.I.T.H.C.H.A.R.L.E. the number 2121@outlook.com.
All right. We will, the superintendent will respond to your questions. Mr. Kane?
Did you get your address?
Oh, the address.
Address? Yes.
I'm sorry, you broke my mind, I couldn't.
Could we also get your address? Typically, we ask.
My address is 243 L.A.W.L.O.R. Street, number 3C, in New Britain, 06051.
Okay. Great. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
And can I just gather your name, please?
I'm Merrill Gay. I'm the president of the board.
Okay, Mr. Merrill Gay. I'm going to disconnect from the call.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your time, and have a great day. Everyone, safe. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
So.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss item 2A, the ratification of the Local 51 contract between Local 51 and the New Britain Board of, or the Consolidated School District of New Britain Board of Education, and with Mr. Kane, Ms. Sarah, Superintendent Sarah, and Attorney Engler.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Déjà vu.
So it is 6:59, and we are back from executive session. Mr. Mercier?
A motion to approve the contract between the New Britain Board of Education and New Britain Federation of School Administrators, Local 51, for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2026.
Second.
The second from Dale. Any questions, concerns, comments? Mr. Mercier?
I just wanted to say thank you to the administrators, the attorneys, everyone who worked on this. It was a lengthy process. I think there's a number of changes that will benefit our administrators. I also like to, I personally really like to see that we're moving towards more equity on parental leave and all of that. Those are good things for the district, and I think they're just the right things to do. But I think this is a very fair contract going forward.
Just a question. The tuition reimbursement that was listed as a change, and I don't have anything to compare it to outside of those two that we just got, but how does that compare with our other contracts as far as tuition reimbursement? Is there any way to find that out? I mean, it's.
Let's try and look. Comparing to the teachers or other contracts? How does the tuition reimbursement compare? Teachers, parents, whoever?
Teachers. We just recently had 1186. I just wasn't, I've just never.
There is tuition reimbursement included in that.
I don't remember the numbers. That's what I'm saying. I just was curious what the number was, because we're going up with administrators. We should have gone up with them, too.
We can get back to you on that. I mean, the contracts all have tuition reimbursement. Like, can I tell you a dollar around 1186, but there is some different reimbursement? Would the teachers have it?
Okay.
We can look into that, yeah.
Okay.
I would also like to add that, like, especially with things like that, too, part of what changes get negotiated depend on what particular unions bring forward to the table and what their proposals are and requests. So for some unions, that might be a priority, where they're making requests for increases there. Other unions might not see that as much as a need. So there's always that give and take in the negotiation process. So something another union may not consider an issue at all may be the most important issue for a particular union, and that sort of shapes the negotiations, too.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we have a seconded motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Santana? Any abstentions? Any abstentions? No, okay. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to board reports. Go ahead.
Superintendent?
You're up.
Okay. I'll be brief, in the interest of time. I did want to provide you with an update from New Britain High School. We also had our town hall last Wednesday night, which was well-attended. I believe Matt said over 400 came through it, which was nice. You'll see some positive trends down in terms of students in the hallways, and some of the next steps as well. We did have our first Super Saturday, just this past Saturday. We started small, with the anticipation of going bigger. We had, the middlers were at the Boys and Girls Club, and the elementaries were at Roosevelt, Lincoln, and Gaffney. And so you can see, I put the enrollment down below, too. Also, a little bit more about the deadlines. And they're trying to recruit more students. We do have Elevate Cycle 1, which starts next Tuesday, the 12th. We currently have about 350 students registered for the Elevate, around 208 little ones, and our middle and high, we have 157, which I'm really happy with. That's a good number, and they're going to be doing more recruitment efforts as well. I wanted to keep you up to date with transportation. You know, we don't talk about it much, but we are impacted by some driver shortages as well. And we are still seeing some of our runs running a bit late. And I just beg patience from our families, because I think we're doing better than other districts. I did have a roundtable this morning with all the other superintendents in the Alliance districts, as well as Commissioner of Education, and in terms of, and a knock on something here, but we're far and much better for student, and specialty are really responsive. We have some of our drivers doing like double runs. As soon as they're done with one, they run, and they'll do the next one for us as well. So, and they're actively recruiting as well.
Can I ask a quick question on that? Just based on Ms. Smith that called in, are we short on the bus monitors, too, or do we have enough monitors?
Well, I can talk to Rich about that. Yeah, I will talk to Rich about that, but they are, they're quite expensive. They're not our employees.
Oh, no, they were our employees.
No, they are not. They are the bus company's employees, and they come at a premium.
I thought they were in the contract. I'll look at the contract. Okay.
Right. So, no, and so, I would imagine drivers come before monitors in terms of what they're choosing. There's still buses walking in and out of the bus. Right. So, anyway.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay. But definitely, I'll call that mom, or reach out to that mom. I wanted to just show you our registration. I'm on page three now. We've had, you know, since September, we've registered 445 kiddos, and about 106 high schoolers. Our homeschooling request, I want to give you the historical, just so you can see. You know, we went down a little bit so far, from 158 to 154. But it is up from 2021. And our student enrollment is at, I had it in there, Jeff, and it just, I don't know where it went. 9,500, 9,600? I had it.
3,950 at the top. Very top.
9,395.
Oh, no. Yeah, it is. Thank you. Mine's on the bottom of that page. Sorry, I suffered. Just a little bit different. So, 9,395, and then we have 300 PKs, you know, totaling about, well, it's 94, and freed 9,700. So we're down a little bit, and you can see the homeschooling has gone up a little bit. So we hover around 10,000, 10,000, two historically. So we are dipped a little bit down. Question, Jeff?
Even from 2019?
Are you talking about student enrollment?
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and look what student enrollment was in 2019.
It's largely been, it's pretty consistent. I mean, in those numbers, I have all those reports, but it's really amazing that I haven't, in all the time that I've been running them, hasn't seen a dip of numbers like what the rest of the state has experienced. You know, that 10% type.
Yeah, okay.
It's largely stayed pretty consistent. I think it's because we take in a lot of new enrollees from out of state and things of that sort, as an offset.
Without coming, you know.
The registrations we saw in September, 550, we know generally, are these kids moving within state, just moving to New Britain? Are they moving from other parts of the world?
I can get that information. I didn't ask for that breakdown, but Jeff, now that you're here, that'd be great. Can you just, and we'll provide it for, I can, we can just shoot it to you in an email after the meeting.
Yeah, just curious, just simply because if there are people coming from, not from within state, but from out of state or out of nation, this is a trend that could continue with immigration crisis and other things that are happening out in the world.
And then, again, another issue that's not unique to New Britain is vacancies and filling of vacancies. One of the common cries among all superintendents on the call this morning was, you know, everyone's actively recruiting, so much so that, you know, our own teachers, our own admins, every single day are getting job offers somewhere else. And people are offering sign-on bonuses. And, you know, we passed around an article yesterday to our administrators around just the amount of fatigue already that our staff is experiencing. It kind of reminds you of how you feel just before Thanksgiving break. And I think, again, not unique to New Britain, and that was affirming today, to hear other superintendents say as such. And they're having similar struggles in terms of people resigning to go to another district, and how can we, how do we work together so that stops happening and provides consistency for kids? Again, the Governor's Executive Order 14, the gist is, until February 15th, 2022, mask wearing is mandated in the schools. And I just attached varsity sports schedules. I want to talk a little, we're doing a bigger push with Hispanic Heritage Month. I just put a couple of really nice pictures in there, and some of the things that we're doing right now. But there'll be more to come. Probably will be released soon. And I think that's about it.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. Sorry. Just wanted to be recognized.
Okay.
Ah, can I?
Yes.
So, first and foremost, I know that I internally had sent an email off about what happened with my nephew, where he was dropped off at my old address. No phone call, no nothing, and was later recovered by the police and our neighbor, but won. So I was just curious, kind of what the procedure is, what the follow-up is, because I know in the immediate, what the follow-up was, was the police picking him up, and that was wonderful that they found him, you know, obviously still in New Britain, but we were able to find him. So he, I've always treated him like a little kid, because he developmentally is between four and five innings in the copy program. So just making sure that at least going forward, there is some sort of communication back, because from that very moment on, I didn't hear anything at all. I actually reached out to Rich, and just said, "Hey, listen, we just need to be able to do this better. What can we do going forward?" And, you know, there was just some, you know, like, "We'll get back to you, we'll let you know."
Can I respond? Please. So I did talk to Mr. Valerio, and he stated that he helped you upload, that he had asked you to upload, and you were struggling to upload. And if you don't upload the information that was needed, which Rich said he didn't mind helping you, but you didn't reach out to say, "I need help." So that was the disconnect, just giving your right information to transportation. So, listen, you, any parent, if they're struggling to upload, do what you did. You called Rich.
I actually do have the email to support that I had provided the information ahead of time. And so I'm just trying to make sure that going forward, it's not just my own child. I do have the email that I can forward to. That part of it isn't even an issue, because I did confirm with Donna's way that she had seen it, and I actually confirmed that the day of my son's PPT. Just so happened that we just so happened to be on the phone, and I just saw, you know, on the Zoom call, and I just so happened to confirm, she had in fact seen it. What the disconnect was in what is considered verification of student residence.
Correct.
So first, I had been told that it was a complete list, a lease that needed to be provided, and then it turned out that you can actually provide an electric bill. So in saying that you can, you need verification of the children living at that address versus a utility bill with just my name.
So I have a follow-up question.
Yeah.
And again, hypothetically speaking, if you weren't sure, did you upload that first thing, and then no one called out to you?
You know, actually, no. Because I had let him know that I was getting the copy, that I provided him with the information, and I understood that they needed the information to substantiate it. But what they stuck to was that it needed to be a lease. I said, "Okay, not even a problem, I'm going to order that." And that's what I'm saying, we're even in that moment of, you know that a child is lost, at least calling the parent back and saying, "Hey, listen, you know, is the child safe? You know, everything okay? All right, we're going to deal with that on this end."
That didn't sound like that was a first request, but we can talk about this off, because I think, I mean, I don't want to go too much into the poor time. But understood that Mr. Valerio responded to you within minutes, minutes.
I called him, he didn't call me.
We, well, okay.
And that's fine, because it's semantics, but that wasn't my, my only concern wasn't just that one, and I appreciate the, you know, I'm not trying to take too much of the board's time either. So then, subsequent to that, my son was assaulted at stake. We often.
Boarder. I'm sorry, this is not something that the board can hear. It's not really fair to the board, to the staff, because they can't reply to things about a individual student's records without, and this falls under it, without violating FERBA. So it's not really something that is appropriate.
For a board.
For a board discussion.
I just want to make sure that at least going forward, whenever something like that happens, that I get contact.
May I respond?
Yes.
And so, and again, closely involved with all of this, Ms. Santana? I am. And semantics is important, right? If I have a student playing out on a playground hypothetically, and they're friends, and they're playing, and one head butts another student, we never write up, like, a discipline referral and call it assault. We don't do that, because it gives you the appearance of there was some kind of altercation. And that's all I'd like to respond now, Mr. Gay.
Okay. I appreciate that.
All right. So let's move on to the, are there other questions from other board members about this superintendent's report? All right. We have committee votes. Finance?
So, I know we accepted a grant for $25,000 from the Community Foundation for preschool readiness, and I thought there was another one, but I can't, I apologize, I didn't take my greatest note. But another thing that I, is on the consent agenda that I just wanted to put out there, we're actually refitting a few buses for preschool, so we can transport our preschoolers safely, right? Like, they get the little harnesses and all that stuff. Instead of the small buses, they're going to be the big buses. Get more of those kiddos in school early.
I think the other grant was manufacturing technology.
Oh, it was manufacturing, yes, 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 yes.
Also from the Community Foundation, we thanked them for the $50,000.
$50,000, right?
For equipment for the lab. Any other issues that you want to?
No, you're actually going to see a very cool presentation, I think, on the cameras at New Britain High, and how dearly they need to be replaced, but it's actually pretty cool stuff. Took me a while to get on board, but there.
Okay. Policy, do you?
There's a number of things from policy on the agenda for tonight, including removal of some policies that, in our review, just were outdated, including expired graduation requirements, a redundant smoking policy that really was wrapped up in another policy very, very similar to it. So just cleaning up those things, and a couple other revised policies for discussion that are on the agenda, and I can speak more to them when those come up.
Okay. And curriculum?
We didn't meet.
Didn't meet. Okay. All right. And board reports.
Just really quick, made me super excited to get, like, the activity calendars, right? Like, this is real, we're actually getting back to activities. Made me happy.
Any other board members have others, please?
I've been to now a football game, and got to see the band and other students in the 150th parade, you know, and similarly, just great to see the kids out and about and doing stuff, and they're excited, practicing, and protecting their non-academic activities that are like such a big part of our school spirit.
Okay. Any other?
I just want to recognize the great attendance from Gaffney Elementary School. I was able to witness Ms. Fazio go into the Dunk Pink. From all the passes that I got, the best of times, so.
Okay. And I had the pleasure of going to the Roots Garden Tour, and seeing the hydroponics set up at the high school, and the hoop house at Slade. That was great to see. All right. Any other board reports? Okay, let's move into our presentations. The first one is the New Britain High security system. Kevin, you're on.
Good evening. Kevin Dion, Director of Facilities. We presented this to the Finance Committee about a week ago, and the thought was that it's so important that you come to the full board to see the same presentation, so you understand what we're discussing tonight. I have hard copies. There were questions, it was a quote that was missing last time, so I thought I would print out hard copies for the board, hope you don't mind.
Thank you so much.
But then you'll have a pocket, and we can just flow, probably keep things going quickly. I guess, since you're an electronic copy, if anybody wants, the electronic version?
Thank you. I could forward it to everyone if they wanted electronics.
I'll just stand caught up on. There we go.
Thank you.
One, two. There you go. Art.
You said you had an electronic copy that you can send? I said, "Oh, thank you."
So the camera system has been in the news. We've given us some, we've had a lot of issues with it over the past year. We've looked at our current camera system, and it's aging out. It does not, technologies have changed, and you're going to see the immense changes that are occurring. Cloud-based systems are the way of the future. We have two companies with us tonight, they're going to explain what this new system that we're proposing. We got bids from three companies. The companies are in there. You can see from the bids that Ava Security, we had Johnson Controls, and ADT. Last week when we presented, we did not have ADT's quote. That is in that packet tonight for you. Ava still seeming lower. And if you look at the summary, you'll see that there's also no three-year licensing with such as Johnson, wanting us a monthly fee, probably was a $3,500, I think, pulling out. But that fee would go into perpetuity until we decided no longer to use their system. It was a $32.55 as a monthly fee for monitoring, maintenance, and licensing. This is not included in the system. This system is a one price. So the price you see for the 100 cameras does not include any sort of monthly fee for license. It's a three-year license, we won't pay again for another three years, and the cameras and all the hardware, it's an open-source system. And the cameras and the hardware, it's an open source system as well, so if we went to someone else, we would just flash the cameras and we'd be able to reuse the hardware that we're purchasing for this project. So it makes sense. What I'd like to do is do a quick presentation because I know time is in the essence. When you look at those three quotes, we needed the baseline of all the companies because there are companies of different size and different options that they need to give us. So it's kind of an apples and oranges. So we asked for them to give us 100 cameras changeover, what that would cost us with the software and the support behind it. And that's where you see those quotes. So that was where we were with the baseline. There was a discussion with the finance committee, what to just do the whole high school over. So 100 cameras is not enough for the high school. So on the very last quote there, you'll see an updated quote on the camera section, you'll see an updated quote from Ava. And this would be if we were to go ahead and convert over all of our cameras. And that can, that amount is for 451, 641, that's for 200 cameras and it's a weekend cutover. And I wanna stress that Ava will speak to that. That is a Friday night shutdown. Monday when we come in, we have 200 new cameras and a new system up and running and recording. So if you look at the Johnson quote, it was Monday through Friday, eight to five, and anything outside of that is additional money. This quote with the 451, and it's in the other quote for 100 cameras as well, the 209, that's a weekend cutover as we call it. So that's, that's excellent. And they've committed to that and they've done it in the past. Ava will speak to their experience, but they've worked with Fortune 500 companies as well as school districts in the past. So the other thing that came up this weekend, I wanna speak to it quickly at the end, is our key card system. This, we've been talking enterprise system, when presented last Monday, we spoke specifically to camera. But over the weekend, and there's a couple of emails in there from people speaking through our key card system, we've had multiple failures of that. It's our key access system where our staff gets into the building. The system, the data that's being, is corrupted due to age. We are running on XP system with our staff ID, it is no longer supported. We've gotten a quote both at our Varan license, which is our current camera license, this came in over the weekend, we got this on Friday at 4:07 PM from our vendor. It says the current licensing of our Varan expires as of February. Varan is our camera system throughout the entire district. That expires February 2022. So we are up against having to buy another license through them for our camera system, of a failing camera system that isn't working. The hardware is past its useful life and depending on what you like the system configured, the costs can vary. This is a direct quote from our vendor. Also says the Varan system needs to be upgraded as the operating system for recorders is using a dated 2012 for the servers. So we are behind the times on our technology. So when you look at the 450, it's a large quote, but understand that quote gets rid of our servers. It allows us to go on a cloud-based system with cameras having, we'll explain how it's, what happens if power goes down, that'll be a question I won't ask. But we'll explain how, how this system is all uncompensated, all in the cloud, and we don't need to update any of these systems that our vendor spoke about over the weekend. But they also said that our other system, which is our key card, is not being supported anymore, they're recommending an upgrade, you see that email in there. So there's more capital, more costly expenses that we need in order to keep our key card systems up. So what I did was we, we ran a quote because the system that Ava is gonna talk about also integrates with the key card system. And you can have a seamless integration and actually it's limitless what we can do with it. As we know, privacy and security as well as reliability are really what we, are fundamentals of what we've been discussing and I'll explain how that's accomplished through what we're proposing tonight. But there is a quote at the very end for 67,000, 67,525,98. That would include us with a whole new key card access system for the high school. So we wouldn't be getting to failures. And ultimately, the rollout is to look and have stability at the high school, it is our largest school, has the most activity, largest amount of students and staff at the same time. So we're starting at the high school, but I would like to roll this out District Y. Also, there's a mobile component to all of this and they'll explain, both through using your phones, to actually use it as your key card, no longer carrying the badges if you don't have to, if you forget it, as well as being able to look on a snow day, everybody can see what the parking lots look like, those that have access to the system, not everybody, but those that are given access administrative rights can see. And it helps in making other operational decisions, not always an investigation based on security. So there's other operational needs that can be met through a system like this. So this time I'd like to bring up Ava representatives.
Yes.
So, do you have?
Yeah, I wanna do, yeah, I wanna do some show and tell. Let me share. All right, let's go on as that goes. So my name is Eric Gutierrez, I'm with Ava Security, so I work directly for the company that makes the software solution. We partnered up with New York Security Solutions, Greg, they're the implementation team. So when it comes to the implementation, that's Greg. I'm more about the bells and whistles of the platform. So what I'm gonna do, keep it very short, there's a lot of stuff that we do, there really is a ton. But what I'd like to do is just really focus on like two or three really high level points in like two to three minutes, I'll try, so you get a rough idea of what we're talking about here. So I guess to preface it, so the big core of our platform is to be proactive, right? So I know there's a lot of, there's challenges that, you know, Jesse and Kevin and the rest of the team are into at the school and we encounter, right? We have East Providence High School, which is a brand new gorgeous facility, they just put in 400 cameras, very similar issues that they encounter, their big thing is, you know, they have a decent amount of guards, how can I be proactive, right? It's great that they're walking around, but how do I get alerts when there's a group of 25 kids out behind the school? How do I know when kids are walking around the building and that's what our solution does? So every single camera is intelligent, it has analytics, we're not doing any sort of facial recognition, there's no FERBA issues or anything like that that I know are a big concern. This is all done, and I'll show you a search, this is all done based on using kind of the likeness of the person, what they're wearing, how they're walking. So when the team, you know, someone like Jesse is doing a search or one of the officers, they're able to search footage in two to three minutes versus two to three hours depending on what they're looking for. So I'll dive right in, so we, we put in, we worked with MIS to put in just a couple of cameras for proof of concept at the high school. So we actually had one of the officers walk around and the first thing I'll point out is.
So these are live, right?
Yeah.
So these are four cameras that we put in, in the high school, we spent the last weekend doing it? Just so you can actually see a live example of where our high school looks like and what these cameras are.
Yeah. So a couple of things here, so if you look at this, you know, think of someone using a system, if you look at a timeline down at the bottom, I know you're looking at the video at the top, here we're able to identify, right, when someone is in the field of view. So obviously it's dark in that area, but somebody was walking through the school. I'm not scrubbing through hours of footage, our system knows there's a person there, right, and it automatically goes ahead and finds that, that blue little blip, our system identified a person, the sensors turn on the lights. Now I go here, this is Pavliazzi walking around. So we set up a rule, and if somebody tripped the rule, somebody was walking around, I set up a line right here in the middle, if somebody crosses that line in either direction, I get an alert. So think about setting up rules at your doors, right, when students are leaving the school. You don't need to, you know, you could, and I think we're talking about proactive, you could have a line in, when somebody exits a door during out, normal hours, you can have a certain officer get a mess, you know, an alert on his iPad or on a, on a phone. So now you can be a little bit more proactive, right? You decide how invested you want to be, right, with the security team, well, they can use it or they can not use it, but the idea is that the functionality is there. The other piece here, so that's kind of what we do here in the video view, we can certainly do multiple cameras, multiple screens, all that fun stuff. The piece here is searching through video, I know that's a big challenge today if there is video. So what we're able to do, right, I can go and search by a person, what they're wearing, gender, all that kind of stuff. I can even upload a picture if I have a picture of them walking away and they were wearing something, I can do that. Again, no, no database, no names, no faces, anything like that, this is just a way to augment, right, the human that's using the system. So I can go in here and I can look for, for example, let's go to main entry, and I can look for anyone that's been in a certain area, right? So I don't care about the office, let's go here. All right, so I wanna see anyone that has crossed this box. So basically that doorway through here, just this small section of the camera for the past, let's go to today, a little bit earlier, I don't know, we'll pick something there, right? And, and you'll, we're gonna get a ton of results because there's probably kids in the school at that time maybe, but we get results instantly, right? So I got 32 examples of people being identified in that camera's field of view, right? So that quickly I can do that. This is Greg, right, when we were walking out of the school. So I didn't have to search through two hours or two and a half hours of video, the system said I saw a person and I, I, I wanna show you where all those people are, you can hover over and play back, right, that's Cody walking out. So I'm not spending hours fast forward 4X or eight times, I'm able to hover over, see is this who I'm looking for, yes or no, and then start building a case. Do that. Big thing here is, there's case management, so if I wanna share this with a, with a principal or security team, I can do that without exporting video, which is what you do today. So there's an audit trail, right? We know who's playing back what, who's retrieving video, who's exporting video, full visibility into what goes on. If something ends up on YouTube or whatever from the security system, we can most likely find out who did it, right? Who's playing what back at what time. If we export video and it needs to go to court, all digitally watermarked, all that fun stuff. So that's kind of the highlights, there's a lot of stuff with maps and things like that, but I'll let Greg talk. Or if there are any questions before I jump away, I can let Greg talk to implementation and things.
So just real quick to kind of reinforce what Eric stated, one of the nice things that I like to point out to people is that your data is, is still yours, it is in the school. With this platform, you get more control over it. So essentially the control that you have now, your data, your video is not leaving your possession anymore. If you look at your current system, if you need to share data with, let's say, law enforcement, you have to put it on DVD, you have to put it on the thumb drive. As soon as that leaves your possession, you've lost control of your evidence. You have no idea what is gonna become of it, where it's gonna go, whether it's gonna end up on social media. With this, you can control all those factors.
Yeah, the one thing I wanted to add because I know it came up in discussions with NIA, so we are a cloud-based platform, we're still recording locally on the camera. So if you lose internet at the school, we still have footage, so you don't have to worry about that. We also have cloud backup. So let's say cameras walk away or something happens on site, as long as we were able to upload that footage to the cloud, you will have that for however many days you can, that can be flexible. So let's say there's critical cameras that you really want four months of video, you can pick and choose those things. So you have a lot of flexibility there. From a cybersecurity standpoint, we have Fortune 5 customers that are using our platform, we've been through that process, we're more than glad to work with anyone in IT to provide additional info. And then we have references that are very similar, you know, in, in size and scale as you guys have shown.
And in terms of, let's say, how do you deploy something at this size in such a short period of time? Well, it's actually because of the technology, the lack of complexity. What's really incredible about platforms like Ava or the Access Control, which is Phoenix in this case, is that what happens is these two companies do a really good job of picking something that is terribly complex, which is something that we're used to working with in the security industry, it's foreign, it's complex, a lot of the tasks are very difficult to do. These two companies do a great job of taking all those complex tasks and essentially making them very simple and very efficient to perform. That right there transmits into every single component of a deployment like this. It makes the installation go faster, the setting up the cameras is more efficient, the programming of the access control is essentially automated. The panels automatically check in with the servers, the cameras automatically check in with the servers. There's also no more single point of failure. So your biggest issue with the system you have right now is should you have a problem with that server? And this is all traditional systems. You have a problem with the video server, you're losing your video evidence and the security team is losing their live video. With technology like Ava on the video side and Phoenix on the access control side, there is no server to rely on anymore. So when a piece of equipment goes down, let's say one camera goes down, it doesn't take your entire school down. In this particular case with your current technology, one device fails in that room, your entire system goes down, printer stops printing, card readers stop reading, cameras stop recording. So essentially that is, right, that technology is part of how we are able to actually deploy something like this so quickly in such a short period of time. I know that a lot of people think the heavy lifting of a project like this is the physical component. Surprisingly, it's not the physical component, it is the programming and the configuration. And with these systems, it becomes so complex that even though you see an installer like myself come into your building and he puts in 200 cameras and you're like, oh, you walk in and you see all the cameras and you're like, oh, well, we must be up and running. And then you go to the guy and you say, well, how are we doing? And he goes, oh, we're about three weeks before we'll be up and running. Do these record? No, not yet, but they will. Right? With this technology, that's not what happens. The day we put this up is the day it's recording, is the day that it's functioning. Same thing with the access control, the day that you hang that panel on the wall and plug it in is the day that it starts doing its job. So it's a very different scenario.
Okay.
No, I think you're good, I mean, I guess at this point, we talked, if you look at the last page, that's the key card access quote request. And I think it's because these systems between Phoenix and Ava are so integrated and we're having so many issues at the high school, one of the things that also Phoenix would allow later on for us to do, again, was using your cell phone rather than, so students or student ID, student actually checking in, they actually have a, we haven't gotten it yet, but they actually have a wireless keypad that you can actually just put on the wall and that would allow you, so you could put them in all your rooms and as the students come in, they can actually badge in and take attendance. So I'm in science, I'm in math, and you would know instantly, instead of having to take any sort of attendance physically, if, as long as they all sign in at the wall, we would know where students are in the building. It's also useful for fire drills, where students were marshaling in different locations. We can use all that for an attendance space, it's not always just security and investigations. There is operational, educational uses for this as well. So these are the things that these systems would allow us to expand on in the future and discuss, but for now, what we're talking about tonight is mainly getting the camera system at the high school updated and running and getting our key card, the last quote there is to get the key cards up and running, which means for all staff and all students at the high school, we would have one integrated system. We have two systems right now, we have the staff system and we have a student system. Both of those are having multiple issues, we had issues with printers for the past two weeks in the student system. We have a corrupt database that keeps failing, just this morning I had another school go offline. There is a sheet in your packet that we've compiled for the past year, it's a little small, I apologize, wouldn't print off properly, but this shows all the issues we've been having for the past year, this didn't just start, all right? This didn't just happen, say, as of August, this has been something ongoing, our vendors are recognizing it, the vendor of our current system is telling us we need to put money into it. My recommendation is that we don't and that we do not go with this system because we are keeping an antiquated system alive unnecessarily, which is not giving us the operation or the efficiencies we need, and we go to a new system, go with the camera and the key card for the high school.
So, so sorry, it's, this is the key cards and the cameras or do you have, is there another?
There's two quotes, yes. The 451, which was, I separated your packet by camera, the beginning and key card is the very last quote, the very last page of the packet.
You're looking at this whole packet? Right, but I mean, is it online, is it part of the actual packet or just the quote? No, it's just the one they gave us under that, just the quote, it's not in the, so we're not voting on the key cards tonight?
If you wanted to, we could go with the key card system, if you, if you want, I offered that as a potential because I thought there might be a question about the integration. When they come in to do the cameras for the weekend, we could do the key cards as well. And we're having as much difficulty with the key cards as we are with the cameras. And this system ultimately, if we go to this camera system, we're gonna wanna go to an integrated key card system as well.
Wait, yeah, well, just maybe next month.
Yeah. Good question, so right now, what do they use now versus what are they gonna have after, when they're going through the door, as staff and students, I know that right now they have an ID, go through the doors, checking your ID and you keep it moving. What do they have now for staff, I'm sorry, when they go in?
So they have the same thing and they will maintain the same thing. Our card readers will be reused, we're not buying new card readers at the moment, because we're not looking for the remote functionality of our phones. That is potential down the road, that's one of those things that's an add-on if we decide we wanna use it for attendance. Right now, the only thing we're changing is the hard, the head, software, the licensing. So we're getting rid of the XP system, we literally have a computer that runs XP in our security suite, which is failing, not supported anymore. We would be getting rid of all that, going to a cloud-based system, but for the security side, maybe one you can speak about, the nice integration between key cards and cameras and how that works operationally.
So essentially there is a very, very tight connection between all the systems. It's kind of a, a process of checks and balances. So I, I understand why somebody would say, okay, at this time, maybe we shouldn't vote on the access control and maybe we should hold off. But really, what's, what's really, really important about this is the experience, right? The, the tying of the two systems together, the meshing of the video event with the access control event. Also, the ease of being able to print badges. I myself have come here on two occasions, and on one of those occasions, nobody prints a badge in the school, right? That right there, that's a problem, right? That is a problem for operations for you guys. And if you can't have continuity of operations, then what's the point of having a specific system? It's gotten too old. It hasn't been kept up to date, and now you're in this boat. But now something has to be done about it, because now it's actually affecting the way your business operates.
So sorry, I was looking for more clarity on what we were voting on based on our, and what we have on our packet, that's all. So I understand what you're saying with the key cards coming second, it's just not on the agenda for tonight. So I'm good.
Actually, I'm good.
Nick didn't have a question?
So there's two quotes, if you want, there's two quotes right now, the 450, there's the 67, 525. That's the key card access, they're both from New York Security.
Also, something I'd like to point out, so it's very frequent in our industry where somebody will come in and order you a product, and you'll see something, and you're like, wow, that looks really good. Well, thank you, it's optional. In this case, with these two companies, the reason why we work exclusively with these two brands, Phoenix and Eva, is because there is no gains like that. If Eva should develop a new feature tomorrow, there is no barter, there is no, hey, you're going to have to give me another $500 if you want that feature. You get it, no questions asked. It's consistent innovation. As they innovate, right, that goes into production. You get it. Same thing goes with the card access. Consistent innovation, new technology constantly going into production. It's no, hey, your system's outdated, you're on 5.1, but you need to be on 5.3, and it's a $3,000 upgrade to get to 5.3. None of those gains are going on here.
Which is exactly what our other vendor was saying to us there. Oh, your continuum's on XP 12, you need to actually upgrade to the new system, and that's costing you additional $3,000 licensing plus $115. So any other companies do that. They'll say to you, well, you're going to get this, but you're not going to get the mobile piece, so you can't look at your phone, and that's an additional module that you have to buy. So you have a question?
Yep. Just for clarity, and correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand what's on our agenda, the item 6A, the 451,000 and change, is the current bid waiver purchase order for the camera system. This additional $67,000, if we wanted to pursue it, the board would have to add this to the agenda and take it up as an additional item. And through you to Mr. Dion, with the access system, have we been in contact with other potential vendors as to what it would cost? I know that we have this quote, but you were mentioning our current vendor and what they said it would cost to upgrade.
So our current vendor is a closed system, which means we'd have to stay with them, whereas these other controllers are not. So right now, we just got a quote, what started this over the weekend was we got a quote for our esports room, and they started telling us about, oh, our infrastructure for our key cards are failing. So that's, that's the concern, is that now all our controllers are aging out, so we have to go ahead and replace the controllers. But are we going to do controllers with a closed system, or something integrates more with our? You know, that's, it's common. You don't usually get, as you can see, we're with them now. Our controllers are with the same system with our cameras, they all talk to each other to some degree, but it's just an antiquated system, that's a closed system, which means you pay more. This system is much more open. So no, we've only, we just started. If we, board decides to go with another key card system, but, you know, we have to decide whether that makes sense, to have an independent that doesn't integrate with our cameras and give us the functionality. So because of that, and it was questioned by our key cards, I presented the quote tonight. If you want to pursue that quote for a fully integrated system, what we call an enterprise system, at some point, these systems actually will talk to our alarms as well. That is future down the plan as far as our alarm system. So using your key card, if you have authorization to be in the building at that time, you would actually be able to shut the alarms off, and the alarms will talk into zoning certain parts of the building. It's part of a master greater plan, but right now, our cameras and our key card are the main priorities. In the future, I'll be presenting what our alarm systems will be doing district-wide. It's very, very complicated and a very large project. And right now, the school, the high school needs those upgrades in order to operate from district-wise.
Just out of curiosity, going back to the quote for the full surveillance system, if I can for just a minute, what if you get there and you find that you really can't use the wires? Because you, I know you keep some of it antiquated, so let's just say you get there and you have to rewire the whole system. Does that go above and beyond what you've submitted right over here?
So we plan for any sort of situations that may arise. What I can tell you is that in a situation like this, you kind of put your money where your mouth is. And if we do run into a situation where the cabling is not up to par, then the onus is on us to actually follow through and give you a full-term key installation. What I can tell you for sure is that at the very minimum, half of the school is on a older, more legacy antiquated IP camera, but the cabling is good. The reason why we know the cabling is good, the cabling is good is because the cameras work. On the other side of it, we do have the older analog system, but that is using twisted pair cabling. There is a chance that some of those lines may not be working, may not be functional, and we'll have to address those one at a time. I highly doubt it is more than 30 lines out of the 200 cameras. And I know that based on evaluating the system that's currently on site, there is about 30 cameras that are out, that no longer produce a video picture. So we're going into this assuming that it's either the camera or the line in this particular case, but if it does end up to be the line, then we actually have to take the initiative to replace that line. That's it.
I appreciate the answer. Okay, so then, so there isn't going to be like a surprise later?
No. Now, the key word is turnkey. You know, when you say something like that, you either put up or shut up.
Oh, okay.
Other questions?
Not a question, but I'd actually like to motion to amend the agenda to just take item 6A next, since we've already discussed this. It makes sense to vote on it before moving forward.
Second.
Second motion. Any questions, concerns about that? All in favor of amending the agenda to move this item up? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Yes?
Motion to approve the purchase order and bid waiver for the replacement camera system at Newbury High School in the amount of $451,641.50.
Second.
Would I make one correction?
Yeah, the funding is now going to change the law for it.
I know originally it said SSER, but there's some discussion with the art money, Austin got being qualified. We don't know right now, but it's going to come through locally right now.
Okay, because that was going to be my question, even though we, it was half for finance.
Yeah, it's going, it's going to work. And then we have the funds, you know, we talked about before, so.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's going from SSER security to what?
To local funds.
Local funds.
Okay.
I just have a question on the original quote versus the updated quote. What was the, you explained the change from the 100 camera, the original quote to the 200 camera?
The 200 camera. There's 100 additional cameras, as well as, because it's decreased amount, and we want it Friday to Monday, it's basically a change over turnkey. There's additional staff support, so those additional licensing.
So basically, what happened was Eric graciously spoke about a school that he's currently working on in Rhode Island, and that school happened to have a very large camera count in that school. Also had a similar square footage to the high school. So if I'm not mistaken, I think the group felt, yeah, the groups, yeah, the smaller school, the group felt that the original number of 100 may just be a little light for this project, so they decided to request that we actually opt it to 200 cameras. And 200 cameras is right on par with what we currently need here, considering that when you add the existing analog and the existing IP, we pretty much hit the same number. So we're right on par with what we need for the school.
So security-wise, we have the coverage that we really need to know?
Yeah. Absolutely, we definitely have adequate coverage throughout the grounds as well as the interiors.
Thank you. I'm sorry, what was the full amount that you gave? It was 400 and?
400, it's in the packet, $451,641.50.
Sixty.
Any further questions on this?
Just back to Kevin's point, is that the correct funding source, the 101093126000?
Yeah, it'd be in the, yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Santana, any abstentions?
Can I just make, comment to the opposition, because it's failing, we have to replace, just?
Absolutely. No, 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 I got that, because he even said that it was a licensing that was coming up February 2022. Absolutely. But we did also raise the question the last time about the three bids, and I'm just saying the other one out.
Okay. Next item?
Next item we have is a presentation.
Presentation from DeLoreto School.
Thank you. I know. Reminder. Reminder, what did that mean? That's what, I know. Thank you. Good evening, thank you.
Everybody aye?
Thank you. Well, no, thanks. Thank you for having us. I know it's late, so we're going to go as fast as we can. Everyone knows, everyone, and you know how you, Dr. Marley. So we're going to present the dual language program, do some updates. The first couple of slides that you're going to see are slides that were presented before. I'm going to go very quickly through them, but I just wanted to elaborate on the importance of the district supporting the leadership of the district and the board supporting the dual language program, and that continued support through the planning, the implementation, and then the continuing support when the program is actually up and running. And that we should share the core value that this program is for all students. It's for students who are English speakers only, for students who are just Spanish speakers only, for students who may be bilingual, for students who speak other languages only, and also for students with disability. It's a program for all students. And we should have the following, we should be in agreement with the following principles. Understand that language is a resource, it's a asset that our students can add with them. That learning in the student's first language affects their cultural and linguistic identities. And that high-quality dual language programs necessitate constant commitment. We need to ensure that we're going to support the program through the planning process, at the beginning of the program, and throughout the implementation. So, but most importantly, what we need to keep in mind is that the guiding force for closing the chief leader gap is equity and self-respect. And this is the core principles of what the dual language program provides. I'm saying enough, but the success of this program depends on our financial leadership and supporting the board. The next slide is the role of the school board. Again, it talks about the school, the role of the school board and the support, but this is, it's a little bit different type of support, where we need to develop, ensure that the dual language programs are part of the district goal, include the dual language program. We have to come up with policies that support the program, and then continue the long-term planning, and that equity is especially with funding, that there's equity in funding. And I have to tell you that, having said that, I can tell you that during the first year, we began now our second year of planning, so during the first year, we were able to bring the team, a leadership team that was comprised of building admins, district admins, coaches and teachers, and community members of the talent. We began meeting by meeting, we partnered with MAVE, and we dove into the demographic data to ensure that the program that we were planning, that we were proposing, was something that was good for a community of students. And the other thing is, I know Dr. Marley now, who is now part of her, a good chunk of her time is working on this program to ensure that it begins past time, which would be next school year, next fall, next year. So like I said before, the two-year program really is appropriate for our DeLoreto since about 67%, about 30% of the students being spent on the, that student phone. This program certainly necessarily can cover the needs of students. And with no less than one-third and no more than two-thirds of the student population will be monolingual or dominant in English or English or Spanish, we have to ensure that the program is balanced. And having said that, I'm going to ask one more question. So as you can see on your screen there, this is the part we're referring to the buckets, that MAVE has given us this great graphic to just sort of demonstrate that the dual language program is successful, because we have the interaction of students through language, and you want to ensure that you have a third of students who are dominant in English, a third of the students who are dominant, in this case, Spanish, and then you can have up to a third of students who may be dominant both of those languages and/or different. We, as you've already heard, and as you know as a board, you have been committed, very much committed to the success and the successful planning process for this important program at DeLoreto. So we, you as a board, share core belief about English language learners and equity and social justice on par with what this school itself is committed to doing as well. And the end goal, being able to eliminate biases that are inherent in schools, and ensuring that we're honoring and valuing the linguistic diversity of our student population, not just at DeLoreto, but throughout the nation. So what have we been getting done? So last spring, there was a retreat that MAVE organized. We had a significant number of teachers and administrators participate with the DeLoreto staff. And from that was a very detailed action plan, lots of questions and material that needed to be created and designed in the summer and throughout this year. So that's essentially the action plan that I've been working on since August. We received that detailed document from Phyllis Arby over the summer. And in addition to that, that meant that I was able to participate in leadership on network series and the coaching series in the summer. And more importantly, one of the big goals of the district, from the support of the superintendent in the Office of Talent Management, was a partnership with ACES, so that we could look within our cadre of teachers here in Newbury to access the bilingual and/or ESL certification through the ArcTel program. So we had between 35 or 40 teachers in September, there was a presentation done by the ACES gentleman, and so we're looking for our current teachers accessing that certification, so they can be either part of the dual language program eventually and/or supporting our second language learners in the district and other schools. So we have lots of things in the works for our outreach to families, and we're, I will be working with, obviously, Alex Ortiz and Lori Butterfield and Edgar Garcia, the admin over at DeLoreto, and the PTA. We're going to be doing an outreach in November, including our conferences with the current DeLoreto families. I've been in touch and working closely with Mike Nada and Tristan Duff, who are putting together a video promotional video, we're going to be working this week at DeLove. And through that, I was able to contact over eight former dual-language students, alumni, that are in wonderful careers and experiences throughout the world. So we are going to be tapping in and speaking to testimonials, what was that program like for them, and what are they doing with that language? So that's going to be very exciting. We'll be able to show that with the board towards the end of November, it takes about a month and a half. And then, of course, we're going to be doing outreach through the current DeLoreto kindergarten families, we're going to be doing surveys, so you can hype up the, I drum up some enthusiasm, I'm not only for K next year, but possibly the first grade, that's what I'm striving for. And then we'll be then also doing outreach through the school readiness program, with Spin Hop and Terry Turcot, to do the outreach in November, December.
Espinhop and Terry Turcot, to do the outreach in November, December, through all of the pre-K families in New Britain. So we want kids from throughout online. And at the school level, we've continued giving the meetings and the school committee, defining the details of that program and the curriculum and the instruction. So the biggest question is working with our coaches at the school to just define the details of the Spanish literacy, what does Spanish reading instruction look like for K? We're doing a thorough inventory of all the resources that already exist in the district. I read a lot of good math, and your literature and resources that the district has already purchased and is using, already exists in Spanish, so that's a good, good plus. Dolorado in its actual building has a ton of books too, so we have that resource and that inventory. And most importantly, as you're seeing the consent agenda, we're tapping into MAVE again, Phyllis Hardy is going to be providing customized technical assistance, not just from the committee, but for the teachers who will be giving the Spanish literacy instructions, she will be training them with her team, so that they're fully prepared to hit the ground running in August, preparing for those two classes. So, that is it, that is our update for now.
Does that, that doesn't change any of, like, the kids that are already enrolled in the school, correct? Like, just the kids who are applying or coming in?
Correct, so we'll be adding in kids. What we're going to see is current kindergarten kids who are there, which, which of those current families would be interested in the first grade, and based on those numbers, we're going to do same, and we may be able to get some first grade students who want to interview them, possibly, we'll see really fast.
Okay. Are there questions?
Just out of curiosity, is this almost like, you know, like years ago, they used to have the Lipensee program, that did like the, what was it, like Chinese, where they had the teachers come, I'm just saying, in that sense, where you're basically taking that catch population and saying, alright, we're going to teach you a little bit more, give you a little bit more support, not saying in another language, but just a little bit more support in Spanish?
I believe that can say they have to take, they have to be tested, and they have to score at a certain level, right, to accept it into the program, so how is it going to work for them? So the only reason we'd be assessing and looking at students is just so that we can determine those buckets, because we want the classroom to have the right balance of language, so that when the students are interacting and learning through play and through their work in class, that we have enough representation of those Spanish, right? Because they're going to be learning from each other. So that's the only reason we'd be like assessing, just to qualify, because we will be doing the lottery, we want to make sure that the, of the balance.
So it's be very much like the old Dolorado?
Yes.
When we, when it was a dual language program? Yeah.
Yeah, to that end, so I'm, I'm thrilled to see this, I'm sad that my own children did not get to, you know, actually have the, the real dual language experience, but at one point, this district had a model dual language program, and it was dismantled first by one superintendent not using it correctly and closing down some bilingual programs, and putting the children in there at different grade levels, and so as we can see now, like, you build the program from the ground up. And, you know, families are committed to that model, and, you know, it's, it's a whole thing, right? It's not just any old, like, oh, you're learning Spanish, it doesn't work that way. Research tells us this is actually the gold standard in bilingual education. So dual language really is a type, it falls under the umbrella of bilingual education, it's just a lot more palatable usually to communities, because monolingual English-speaking students benefit from it too.
The key is the, is the integration, right? So we have kids, there's, there's relationships that are building between kids from different backgrounds.
Absolutely.
And that's the strength, I think.
Yeah, no, the benefits are enormous, not only to language, like, it is the true language acquisition, because language acquisition does not happen in two years or three years, no matter what laws we write saying that that's what we want, for example, and so, yeah, so bringing that back to what once was, like I said, where one superintendent sort of used it incorrectly, and then the next just dismantles it completely for, in favor of English-only type approaches, and so, this is amazing for our community. Like I said, I, you know, I wish my kids got to take advantage of it, but as such a multicultural community, a community where literally about half the population is Spanish-speaking, this is affirming and, you know, a commitment to understanding that, you know, not, not the achievement gap, but the opportunity gap. We know the long-term effects are actually higher achievement than counterparts who do not participate in dual language programs. And when the program was sort of in full effect, in the, in, being applied with fidelity, which did not happen later, I got to see those kids at the high school, I taught Spanish at the high school, and I would have children, for example, who were trilingual students, who spoke Polish at home, English through the schools, and went through dual language, and were literally fluent in Spanish, sounding like a native speaker. And so it's just such an amazing asset to our already multicultural community, and I'm so excited to see it, and I will definitely be supporting the process when I'm not on this board, when I am, wherever I am, you know, you will.
And again, I just want, I want, it, it takes board commitment, right? This isn't a, oh, let's do this, and then two years, this is, I mean, every time we do that, we upend a student's educational career, right? Where we're kind of promising, you know, a second language for them. So anyway, it's, it's a long-term investment with huge payoffs, that's a first. And, and again, we can explore, we've talked about this later, later, having different tracks in different schools as well, not making it just Dolorado, but, but having those offerings in some of our other elementary schools as well, if we have, hopefully, the responses that we're hoping to get from our families.
Yep. As one of those parents who had a monolingual English student who went through this, Sylvia is her fifth grade teacher, it was a wonderful program for her. My daughter ended up being, we go off to Chile and was a year abroad, and was well-equipped with the foundation she got at Dolorado.
Must've been Sylvia.
It was.
It was Sylvia.
It was worth our while, maybe all this time, it took these years of planning so that it sounded right. And, um, but it says, you know, it's been to high school, and then at the high school we have the final language courses and the self-literacy, which we, we hear only in this number, so one program fits into the line.
All right. Any other questions?
You made me think of something else when you mentioned your daughter, so, you know, on top of like the, just the equity piece and what it does to our students here in general, so districts with less funding, like New Britain, where we spend so little per people that there's nothing to, to cut from all the time, right? We've cut languages at the elementary school, we've cut languages at the middle school. You go to our surrounding cities, West Hartford and all around, and students are learning languages from kindergarten on, because they can afford that and they can have those teachers. And so this is so supportive of our students sort of being aligned with some of the access that other students do, and, and they tend to be monolingual, English, high-income communities, and that leads to an elitist bilingualism, rather than tapping into the asset that our community already has with another language and uplifting it. Okay, that's it for real.
Okay. All right.
So it, just back to my original question, so it really is saying we're taking these students, being able to, like, create a pocket, eventually you'd like to expand it, District Y. So that, that's where I was just going for the beginning, so you're just taking, as long as the families are going to be supportive and have that interest, and would also have that, that's what.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. On to our consent agenda. Does anybody want to take anything off of the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Item T, please.
Item T. All right. Any other things to come off consent agenda?
I just lost my space, I'm sorry. You want to look at that? Oh, you have it.
So what in particular you're looking for?
I just wanted to look at the notes from the special meeting, but I will leave it on.
Okay. All right, so, everything besides item T is approved? We'll add, yes, go.
Motion to approve bid waiver and contract between multi-state association for bilingual education made on the consolidated school district of New Britain for the new dual language education program planning year two in the amount of $10,600.
Second.
Discussion? Do you want to, you don't want to explain while you're standing?
You could ask me.
Yeah, you don't, don't need to. Any other, any questions about this item? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I take it back. I'm sorry.
Any opposed? Are there any abstentions?
I abstained, I'm too tired, I'm sorry, I've been a long one.
That's funny.
And, and the reason you're abstaining is to?
Yeah, I'm abstaining because I'm a board member of MAVE, and I, although I have absolutely no financial benefit from this, I just want to avoid any conflict with interest.
Okay, and that is the appropriate use of abstention. Okay, let's move on to new business. Ms. Mercer?
So you already did A, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the Chamberlain Project furnishings, furniture and equipment and technology budget in the amount of $912,547.58. This is from the Chamberlain Project funding.
Okay. I've got lots of questions on this one.
All right.
I apologize.
Okay, go ahead.
So forgive me. I thought these typically go to the SBC, is that?
They, they do, so let me just start, these have been approved at the last SBC meeting, this is just one of the other steps when we get to this phase, the FFP and Technology phase.
Okay.
It went before the SBC, it goes before the state, there's a discussion with the LSCGR, that's already happened as well as, so the board, SBC looked at it, they approved the amount, now the board vet, it's just the checks and balances that occur with reimbursement for projects like this, so this is just where the board reviews it, looks at it, agrees with the SBC, and then from there, it'll go back up to the state with a signature from the president of the board as well as superintendent.
And just, I'll just, so they're going to approve, like, new mops, lawn mowers, that's common practice, because I don't think we've ever seen this level of detail with other.
So not now, we think is eligible, that, that is a comprehensive list, there's eligible, any eligibles on there?
Yep.
So things will fall off, they, they, they changed something with this this year, where the computers were eligible, right? Chuck, can we hear?
So we found out that computers that are connected to projectors in a classroom are eligible, whereas a computer that is used for a principal or for a secretary is ineligible. So that actually allows us to move over any classroom teacher, computer as an eligible teacher.
So this is a list to outfit the whole, this is what it would cost for the FFP and the technology for the project. The actual eligible versus ineligible will then be discussed later on with, with the state, and they'll give us the exact price. So this is almost your worst case, this is what our cost will be, the actual cost to the district will be determined later. But a lot of these items are eligible, they're on state contract, you, you haven't seen anything to this level before?
I have not.
I've never seen the, like, the blowers and the lawn mowers, yeah.
Well, not like, sorry.
So those are on, some of those are on state contracts, there's state contracts that we can, we can get these items off of, and we can apply it to the state for eligible.
Just for information to the board, I believe in the past, for some of our building renovation projects, these things have come before us, but it's often been just a.
Just a line item, not, not the detail.
Long line item, not all the detail of what it is, so that is, I actually really appreciated over the last several months, the amount of transparency and providing us with multiple, you know, all the bid information and all of that, you know, adds a lot to our packet, but it's, you know, there's a lot that goes into a school.
No, 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 I know, well, so, I just, I just put it out there, I didn't want to cause any more friction, that it was coming to us and not going to us, I just wanted to make sure, I haven't been able to.
No, so I, I have the forms here, actually, for the president, superintendent to sign, and it has the board chair, Tim Stewart's signature early on it, so it's already been reviewed by the SBC. This is more procedural, then if you have any questions, they will override. And again, sometimes I give too much information, but I think that's best.
No, this is actually, no, this is actually good, because then I just have one teeny, one more question. So the items that are ineligible, is that something that later on can come out of our local budget? It's like thirty-one, six fifty-six. Is that a possibility, like, if the state says eh eh?
It's a possibility it would come out of there, or it would come out of the project, the total project, of course, so that'd be an SBC discussion, but yes. It would be paid, that's, it would be paid here at the local level, how, who it comes out of, would be discussed.
They approved it?
In future discussion.
Okay.
Right now, we, we care most about the eligibles, and when we present these items to the state, we ask them, you know, overall, one yea or nay, and then they'll do an audit as, Jess said, there's nuances to what computer is acceptable and what's not, what's eligible and what's not.
Okay, and I appreciate the state contract, all that stuff in there, I like it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Yes?
Yeah, I think I'm still on the same one. Gail maybe was starting to.
Please have to go back to me.
So I thought the council voted to remove the board as approving any SBC stuff.
So that's at the local level, but this is still by state statute, that because this is a reimbursable through the state, is a priority project, certain items, there are certain phases that will still come before the board, and all projects, the board event will still have to vote and agree to this, your design development, you know, your programming phase, there's about three or four, and then your closeouts would still come to the board, so.
So although the council decided that it would be cleaner to not have us involved, the state actually requires.
Right, local law can supersede the state, so that's a state, there's milestones in the project, let's call it that, there's milestones within the project that will still have to come before the board, they'll still have to go before the common council as well.
Okay.
I was just going to bring up that point, that there, because this is a state-funded school building project, there are all of those checkboxes in state law, in the state's processes, so it's not.
Okay.
Right, and.
Yes.
As a follow-up, this is one of our projects that will be reimbursed at the new higher
Correct.
Percentage, ninety-five, which were like the only ones in the state, right? Since to our state delegation, but it's of eligible costs.
Of eligible, correct.
So then any of the things, like whatever these forty-five pencil sharpeners, or whatever that say ineligible?
I was looking at this.
Right, so if they're eligible, we still go through, whether it be, you know, we have to follow bid process, so it's questionable about going through a bid process and the overall total amount for that, but then having the ability to piggyback on the state contracts, DAS contracts, you know you're still getting the lowest price, so, we would still, we'd be RFPing our new state contracts.
So this allows us to get lower prices on the items, even if we're not going to get that level of reimbursement?
Right, we're still getting the best pricing, we're still, as you can see, we're, we're going through the cut sheets, and there's some that's eligible, they have some state contracts at the bottom of one of these sheets, so we're going through that, and we're still going to get the best pricing, the question is whether we get the ninety-five reimbursement, and what percentage we pick up.
Is there?
But this is where the story goes up.
Yeah, no, that's okay, sorry. Is there something along the lines then to make sure that we get, so for example, this project was fifty-six million, fifty?
A little, about a little over fifty.
Right, so somewhere over fifty million, and as a city, we'll be reimbursed ninety-five percent through the state. If we have ineligible things, like, is that being calculated to that amount, and then we kind of missed out on some money we could get reimbursed, or will there be other things?
So eligible and ineligible are tracked, but some discussions come up during the audit process, so when you close out a project and the project is done, you have these discussions with the state going along, but also at the end, there's an audit that's done, and to make sure that what we said was done here in September, or October now, of October twenty-twenty-one, when the project finalizes in January, February twenty-twenty-three, you start seeing the state audit coming, you want to make, some things may change, so during an audit process, some things may fall off, some things may come on. fall off, some things may come on. So we really don't know the total eligible costs until the audit, until we're fully done, and making sure that what we're telling them today, we actually did. It's just it's a fluid project, it's a long-term project. This is a worst case, these prices have come off state fit, this is a worst-case scenario of what we're up against, and then everything that's eligible would just basically be 95.
Right, I'm just, I'm asking more like, are we making sure we're taking advantage of eligible things so we can get the maximum reimbursement, because I would rather see, like, things that go to a classroom and are reimbursed, right?
We're pushing hard with all the eligibles, we're making sure that we follow, all DAS, which is to either follow state contract or do an RFP process ourselves, we want to make sure that we're following that, so when it falls in the eligible list, it doesn't fall off for another reason such as, we just, we just didn't bid it out properly.
Gotcha, thank you.
We're tracking all that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right.
I'm just glad the state realizes the importance of having a little bit of oversight.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you, Kevin.
Motion carries. All right, Ms. Mercer?
A motion that the board adopt the board position statement on diversity, equity, and inclusion, that is included in the packet.
Second, okay.
This is just a statement that, you know, aligns with sort of the work that we've been doing, the vision of the district, and it just explicitly states some of the ideals of the school district. This was way back in June, I believe, the policy committee discussed this, and it just didn't come up on our most recent agenda. But, you know, I think this just is very much in line with a lot of our policies that we've adopted, and it's not a specific policy, it's a position statement, it's sort of one of those guiding principles, similar to how a district adopts a mission and a vision. This identifies the fact that we really, you know, diversity, inclusion, equity is an important part of what we do.
Any questions?
Sorry, give me a second.
Yeah.
My context is boring, my vision. I try to wear context today, be fancy.
We haven't had a position statement in the past, so there is no red line.
Correct. This is, this is a new position statement that we did not have in the past. It's because it's on the left-hand side.
Okay, any further comments?
I mean, just to read it very quickly, because I think it's important to have it on the record, what it says, and so that people at home know what we're discussing, but it says that the New Bern Board of Education and the Consolidated School District of New Britain, together the district, value diversity of backgrounds, beliefs, and perspectives, and are committed to promoting an equitable and inclusive educational environment. All students, regardless of race, religion, color, national origin, ancestry, alienage, sex, sexual orientation, marital status, age, disability, pregnancy slash parental status, gender identity or expression, veteran status, or any other characteristics, characteristic protected by law, have the right to access opportunities and supports available throughout the district's educational programs. The district recognizes that societal bias, discrimination, intolerance, and other forms of discriminatory practices have created barriers to student progress in public education. The district is therefore committed to working towards identifying and addressing barriers and inequitable practices. I believe that's supposed to be that lead to such disparities among various groups in the school community, and enhancing cultural competence throughout the district's educational programs. The district is also committed to promoting an equitable and inclusive educational environment, and seeking to provide all members of the school community with opportunities, resources, and support that, support that facilitate learning and growth. To that end, the district seeks to increase its cultural responsiveness as a means of facilitating student progress towards becoming lifelong learners and socially responsible global citizens.
There was a moment where you stopped there, was there a typo in a draft?
The typo in the draft that, you know, is. Yeah, in the second paragraph, it should be inequitable practices that lead to such that lead to such disparities among various groups, there should be additional to that.
Do you want to amend the motion?
I would, motion to amend to include the typo of adding that between practices and lead.
Is there a second? Okay, any questions about the motion to amend? All in favor of amending the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Motion is amended, now we will complete the, any further discussion on the amended motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, new business?
The policy committee moves to approve revised policy 6144.1. Exemptions from instruction in school activities, it's from committee, doesn't need a second.
Okay. Discussion, yes?
Just a quick under-relish, religious, religious. Should it be amended to say of a student or their parents instead of his/her parents?
Thank you, that, that is a very good catch, thank you. Motion to amend all instances in case we missed any others in this policy of, so motion to amend all instances of his/her parents, or his/her in general, to read there, and directing the clerk of the board to additionally make any minor grammatical changes to accommodate such amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, okay.
Just to clarify, under the section for religious amendments, what we're looking to do here is just make it so that it is more in line with actually addressing the concerns of the parent, rather than just making it, you raise a concern, you don't do this entire course, because it's not like the subject of, say, history, or music, or something like that, is necessarily inherently against someone's religion, but there might be activities, or practices, or elements to that, that it, within the course. So the way it previously was written, you almost would end up excluding a student from an entire course over something that could be a specific activity, and this just made it more in line with what the practice is, it also puts in more place an actual process, so that the district really understands what the issue or concern is, and works with the family to address that, and make, you know, just as in line with other things, making reasonable accommodations. It also brings our policy more in line with state law, as to what, what we have to allow exemptions for. And that's most of the thrust there.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Yep.
If, let's just say you're a parent, and you say, I don't want my child participating in, I don't know, I'll just say, you know, use this month Hispanic heritage, I don't know, as an example, blah, I don't want my child learning about Hispanic heritage, is there like a certain amount of time that you, that the person allowing for the reasonable accommodation from the district, is there a timeline that's in there? Do you understand, I mean, I submit my request on Tuesday, am I going to get an answer by Friday?
If I may, so that would fall under administrative procedures and setting up a timely way for doing that, that is beyond the scope of just the general policy. Typically, the admin procedures deal with that. I'd assure, I'd assume that we want it to be timely, but we also do, you know, want to allow in that process for there to be a discussion, you know, for example, it's, to use the example provided, I, if an administrator has a parent come in and say, I don't want my child learning about Hispanic heritage, um, for religious reasons, there needs to be a conversation as to what exactly are the concerns there? And that's the thing, is Connecticut technically does not allow for a blanket religious exemption, but we felt in policy that we want to be respectful of the diversity in our community, so making a process where there is. I imagine that in drafting admin regs, they're going to have sort of a timeline or a process that'll be followed.
Yes. Is there anything currently on the books as far as a religious exempt, you know, like, let's just, I don't know, you want, didn't want your kid to, I don't know, learn about birds and bees as another example? Yeah, I'm just saying, is there something that's currently on the books that speaks to how much time they have?
Go ahead, Ms. Mercer.
Again, through, through the chair, there is a statewide, there's state law that allows parents to exempt their children from what's considered family life education, and that's defined, that's actually section four under the policy, so there are, there are exemption processes for that, it's part of, I believe, our student handbook that is sent out to parents, it's online.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, there is those exemptions, there's a couple other that are mentioned in here, and we actually added at the end of this revision, other state exemptions, because there are times when the state has added, so like, for example, firearm safety instruction, if your district has a firearm safety instruction unit, then that is something you are required to allow parents to exempt their children from. So rather than constantly be chasing state law, we put that language in there as a catch-all, obviously, if state law is on the books, we're bound by it.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions on this?
I actually have two.
All right.
Item, well, section two, medical, we're removing the medical piece.
Yep.
So do, again, for Mr. Gay, but to address that, it's, that's something that technically would fall under a 504, if there was a medical exemption for a student, there's already established state law and processes, there would be other accommodations, so it wasn't really necessary to have it in this policy, because you don't need to have a policy to comply with federal law.
So that's a, sorry, that's a 504 plan, so I break my arm, I can't play gym, or I came in with my brother's old splint, I don't feel like playing gym for the rest of the year. Is that covered here, or is that, that's how I took this medical, was like, if I break my arm, not a 504 claim, but if I sprain something, so.
And, and Superintendent Sir Eric can correct me if I'm wrong, but in the case that a child is issued a doctor's note, that is essentially like a temporary 504 plan.
Okay.
So it's still.
Even write a formal one.
Yeah, it's still, it may have an expiry on it.
Okay.
So 504 is typically, like, when you get, and then that would end that 504, so as, as an educator, I get those off, and so-and-so has suffered a concussion, so-and-so has had this type of injury, here are the accommodations until further notice, and then we eventually get a notice from the nurse that is, you know, X, Y, Z is no longer active.
Thank you.
I thought 504.
Further questions?
Yeah, they cover a lot of things.
Okay, seeing no further questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain, I'm sorry.
You're abstaining, okay. Motion carries. All right, the next item?
Yes, still me, I'm sorry. A policy committee moves to adopt revised policy 6146.22, revised special regulation requirements for the class of 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can you summarize for me, please? I was.
Yes, go ahead.
In a circle.
Yeah, so in summary, this is really just extending the exemptions we put in place last year for COVID through the end of this year, just because, it was a request that came from the high school staff, you know, as part of sort of our recovery and our focus on social emotional wellness and all of that, the state, you know, the state, things are kicking up. We did ask actually at policy, at the policy committee meeting about, two questions came up, one was, had this benefited a number of our students, like, make, you know, putting this exemption in place, and there were a number of students who it really did benefit and made the difference between graduating or not, but the other question that was asked is, for our students who are, say, college-bound, are they, are college-bound students are still being counseled and directed towards getting the number of credits that they need to enter into a college successfully? So it's not like our college-bound students are going out with just the 20 credits, but it did help some of those really struggling students get that high school diploma. So that, I know that was, yeah.
Sorry, and that, I think I'm going to go back to my comment of 20, when we initially did this in 2020. Of late, even just recently, kids who have graduated 2016, 17, 18, they want to go to college, they don't have the credits, so I think we're hindering them, even though we're saying, oh, college-bound, you know what, Nick, you really need to take these classes, you know what, Violet, you're not going to college, it's okay, you don't have to take it, but then two years from now, you want to go to college, you don't have your high school credits that you need to take, that you needed to take. So, I understand it, I understand we're in a place of COVID, but I think we're hurting students who are not making that college-bound decision right now as juniors and seniors. So, that's all.
So, I mean, this meets the graduation, the current state graduation guidelines, which, so it's not, we can't lower it to be below what the state does, so we were asking for more than the state asked for. So any student with this is eligible to attend college. The credits that are being talked about for extra is like, you know, like, my kids take AP and take some other things, or you have this many years of a language, and if you don't, you can still go to college, but now there are extra requirements when you get to college, so they might say, you have to take a language, not go to school, and take a number of credits in high school, so it doesn't hinder them from entering. There may just be additional requirements there, but that can happen to any of our students if, if they don't do well enough on an entrance, English, if they don't do well enough on an entrance, math, you know, even if they have credits.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Next up.
A policy committee moves to strike policies 51, did I skip one? Oh, I did. 5131.61, smoking, 6146, graduation requirements for the class of 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019, and policy 5146.21, revised special requirements for the class of 2020. And that was a motion from the policy committee, does not decide.
Okay. Do you want to explain why you're doing this?
So the smoking policy is redundant to another policy that actually is more expansive. We noticed this when we started looking at possibly revising a smoking policy due to the legalization of marijuana, and it was brought to our attention that this smoking policy didn't deal with vaping and things like that, and that made my brain go, wait, we've talked about vaping, and there was a redundant policy. I think what may have happened is when we approved that policy, we were looking to strike that, but the motion just never got made, so we're just cleaning that up, because this is really just a redundant policy, and then. And then removing the old graduation requirements, there's really no reason to leave them on the books as policy, because those students, you know, have law, you know, they're not in the system anymore. And even if they were, it doesn't need to necessarily be something that's established in our policy for us to be able to go back and historically look at what their graduation requirements were.
Okay.
Quick question. So you can still access the requirements in like your archives, you just don't need them to be part of the actual policy?
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Further conversation? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, move on to the next one. Which no.
Which no. Did not come to committee. IG approved increased pay rate for employees working at varsity football games to $1,700, coming from the athletic department.
Oh, he is here.
He is.
I was just gonna say.
Run up and say why.
Sure, so just quickly, so I, back in December of 2020, the board approved a policy to basically generalize all pay rates for all levels of athletic events to $3,750 an hour. And I think overall, that was a good decision. The only issue is with the varsity football games, because the timeframe that the folks are working there tends to be three to four hours, as opposed to about two hours, which they normally work for, say, a boys' basketball game or a girls' basketball game. Also, they're normally on Friday nights, so it's a little bit harder to find folks that come out on a Friday night. Finally, usually if somebody's working a soccer game, or a soccer game or a basketball game, they'll work a JV game and a varsity game in about two and a half, three hours, and that will entitle them to make $75 for the night. So this would just, this just kind of equals it out a little bit, so that we can get some additional, help us get some additional staff members after football games. And it just gives us some additional eyes and ears, they all have radios, and it prevents a backlog of folks waiting to get into the stadium at the beginning of the night. So we normally would spend ballpark, if we were paying $3,750, a person would spend about $1,125 for a five game season. This would, I think, up that to $1,700 for the whole season if you paid folks the $60 rate. So that's just a little bit of a background. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Thank you.
I have a quick one. So it's $60 an hour that you're paying, or $60 for the game? Because I know typically they leave after halftime.
Yeah, so $60 for the game, we usually get, have them get there about 5:30.
Yeah.
The people that take the tickets usually leave around 7:30, 8:00. If they're working a gate, they're there for the, basically the whole game until 9:00, 9:30. So it's $60, it's $60 a game.
So not the 37 an hour?
Right now, it's $3,750.
But they only get the $3,750?
Only $3,750. It's $3,750 a game right now. This would be, just move it to $60 a game per person.
Okay, I got you. I'm there.
All right, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries.
I abstain.
Next item?
Item H, approved purchase order and bid waiver for preschool classroom furniture and supplies, $35,625.56. Did not come through committee.
Second.
Okay.
So we are anticipating, we're opening another full day classroom that will be starting in January, and we need furniture to outfit. You know, it's been a, I know Carrie's probably on, but just talking to Chris, we're filled, right? The full day is really what our families want and need. We still have some hard day, we do. And so we're opening another full day classroom in January. And more to come on that, because we're looking to help our community as well, with some of HRA and NYW. We'll get more of that next month, just for you.
Any further conversation on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. And the last item.
Partnerships, where does that fall in? Because there is no committee review, but, so item I, partnerships approved. Oh, I think a motion to approve the purchase order bid waiver and contract between the Opportunities Industrialization Center of New Britain, OYC NB, and the Consolidated School District of New Britain, $57,000.
Second.
Okay.
I've got Sandra Sanford. Sandra, if you could. Talking to a screen, but.
There we go.
Then I look here, because her voice.
I hope everyone's doing well. Do you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. We've had partnerships for the last few years with OYC, working with our youth in the high school. This year, there's an extension of that program. It's a continuation, but the extension of the program is to include our middle school students. This is our, this is our third year. It's paid for out of our Title Grant. And Title IV typically was the first series that we started this work on for the social emotional development of our youth, as well as increasing our partnership. So this is an extension of that contract to be paid out of ESSER as well, but including our middle school students.
Well, I think maybe I'm looking at it the wrong place. It says it's coming from Title IV. Is that ESSER, Title IV? No, ESSER is not Title IV.
No, it is, this is Title IV.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong, I'm sorry. I was like, that's one? Well, I'm looking at the paper, then I'm looking here, and my, because this title, sorry.
The reason why we put it under partnership, some of our contracts that when we work with our partnerships, specifically the YM, the YW, OYC, Boys and Girls Club, it's our partnership, our continued partnership and collaboration with them. So it does come out under the partnership office.
Sorry, I can't use my glasses and have a mask on at the same time. I just can't do it.
All right. Any questions about this? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Yes.
Motion to add an item to the agenda. The approval of one campus safety officer, one admin secretary, two, and ten paraprofessionals.
Second.
Sorry, let's just add it to the agenda.
Okay. So all in favor of adding this to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I was just gonna say no, but aye.
Motion to approve the addition, the new position request of one campus safety officer, a 12-month position for Roosevelt in the amount of $69,150. One admin secretary, two, a 12-month position at the NDEAC, that's our main building here, in the amount of $68,896. And 10 paraprofessionals, 10-month position, three for Smith, three for Chamberlain, three for Smalley, and one for Vance, in the amount of $580,000. All of these are coming from ESSER II, with the exception of the paraprofessionals, which is a combination of ESSER II and ARP.
It's the officer that's like the.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the officer is the, my mistake, sorry. It's the officer that's the mixture of the two. The rest are all ESSER II. Thank you.
Second.
Here we go, second emotion, questions, concern?
There's a lot more in motion.
Go ahead.
Just quick, Roosevelt is a, that's an additional or new, like, they don't have security guard now, correct?
They do not.
They do not, okay, I didn't think so.
Yeah, that's, it said in the memo that that was.
Yeah, the entire.
Position.
Yeah, okay.
My only question was actually to the free use of the superintendent perhaps, or someone else. The Roosevelt position is listed as a 12-month position?
As far as security?
As far as security.
So they have an option to be 10-month or 12-month. 10-month, there are a lot of people, when they come out of retirement, don't want to work the summers, some do. And so we offer either a 10-month or a 12-month. We do have some security guards who are 12-month now.
Thank you.
So in approving this as a 12-month, we still have the option to hire somebody for 10 months? Or is it, it's a 12-month position?
This is, well, we could, right. I mean, this was, we afford them the option of 10 or 12. But we could.
Just to clarify, during the summer, if Roosevelt campus doesn't need a 12-month, if you hire 12-month, they can utilize it if possible.
So we utilize them in 1186 in the past. What they do, the security then helps out with the cleaning and the maintaining of the buildings over the summer months.
Okay. Any further questions about?
Mrs. Sanford.
Any other positions? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Yes.
Motion to add an item to the agenda, the acceptance of a grant in the amount of 200, sorry, 25 million 758,967 dollars.
Sorry, what was? You're wearing a chin.
Acceptance of a grant.
Sorry, I was trying to get on to. That's all, please.
Yes, a second, okay. Okay, so we have a seconded motion for $25 million, to accept the $25 million.
To add to the agenda.
To add to the agenda, okay, add to the agenda. Yeah, okay. All in favor of adding this to the agenda?
Aye.
Motion to approve acceptance of the, of a grant from the federal, it's a federal alliance grant in the amount of $25,758,967.
Second. Cartwheel second.
Okay. Any discussion on this item?
I do, if we could, I mean, there is a little bit of background, but it does state what the grant needs to be used for. So was it 92.76% staff salary and benefits, inclusive of district coordinators, admins, performance coaches, and teachers, elementary, ELD, SLD teachers, tech teachers, math, ELL, science, social studies, oral language, and business teachers, climate and recruitment, talent, minority recruitment, ELL coach, and admin assistant. That is correct. And then 2.82% attendance and family engagement. This is already the breakdown, or is this the breakdown that's in the grant?
Let me just explain, let me just explain really quickly. This is the alliance grant.
Yep.
The state is not now putting new assurances in there. They want the board to accept the grant from now on, before you receive the money. So I mean, you really have to accept it. So Sandra Sanford had to put this together today. And it's really showing what the budget right now for the grant is. So what you're seeing here is 95, 96, I think it's, um, somewhere about 96, 97.5% of that grant really is really for positions, is the FTEs and the health insurance. And the other 2.5% is where we, we ask for third-party vendors for in-service and instructional supplies. So it's the, it's a grant that you probably saw in the last, you know, half of the year, 10 years.
Yep.
That you go over every year. And so he actually, now that we're actually saying, accept it. I mean, you don't accept it, I'm not sure what we're gonna do with it. It's a little problem, but yeah.
So, but I guess my question really was, is this the breakdown in the grant?
Yeah, it's, yes.
That's what they say, you have to spend 93% on.
No, no, this is how we, this is how we budget.
This is how we budget.
Yes, it has to be certain assurances. Sandra actually worked hard on this, there's different things, this is what the problem, so that's.
Thank you.
May I do get this one?
Are there other grants that come through that would give us more for?
Now, so when you look at the, when you guys look at your June budgets, your budget will get an operating budget of $125,700. Then we actually got another, I'm gonna make the number, $40, $50 million of grants. This $25, $26 million alliance, we knew we were getting. So that was part of the budget. The state is actually saying right now, we want some type of proof that your board accepts it. The last 10 years, we've always done anyway to board that. We've seen things, they never officially accepted. That's all they're doing.
So this is just the formality of us approving? Oh, I got you, thank you.
This is the first year that it's happened like this. Like in years past, we get the money, you know we get the alliance money.
I was just gonna say, I got excited for nothing, it's money that we always get.
I was happy you were happy.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it is more, but it is more. We can just like to know. Not that we didn't get the 25, this is more. And again, this is.
They'll increase by like 3, 3.94 million dollars.
Right, and this is the promise that the state has made around trying to, to.
Make it a little.
Make it more equitable with suburbs. And so they've been easing into it slowly, as they start to reduce some of the suburban rural, they increase the urban. And so they have a plan. Originally, I think the governor had said that it was gonna, if we got the ESSER dollars, that we weren't gonna get this. But then, then all of us as alliance districts said, mm, that's reneging. And so they did reinstitute it, and they're following the recipe.
Okay, so any further questions about this grant?
A little deflated, but.
It's okay.
I'm glad you did follow me, I was happy. Yeah. Yeah, but that is.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Yes.
Okay. Motion to add an item to the agenda. This is for the addition of 64 TAs and/or BSAs at various locations throughout the district.
Second.
Okay, so we have a seconded motion?
Can I take the time to explain?
Can we add it to the agenda?
Oh yes, let's add it to the agenda. So all in favor of adding to the agenda?
Aye.
All right, now a second.
Motion to approve new position requests in, for 64 additional TAs and/or BSAs at various locations throughout the district. Really quickly, I believe these are all funded through ESSER.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
And for those who are looking in the packet, it's the one that has the big layout on the front. Which I thought was just a report, so I missed it in my other additions.
All right, so.
Can I explain?
Yes, please do.
I'm sorry, I'm taking my mask off for just a minute, so I can. So as I'd stated earlier in the day, we were really successful in hiring over 80 teachers assistants, 30 of them being bilingual, 50 being monolingual. We were shocked, but we, and we still have a lot of candidates and applicants, which is exciting, as well as BSAs. What's happened is, because of the substitute shortage, because of teachers that are going out on quarantine, because our building principals are trying to find people to cover. And so the intent and the purpose of the teacher's assistants was for them to augment classroom practices, not supplant, right? And we find ourselves in this position of supplanting right now. And we're not, you know, that was a part of our recovery efforts. And so we said, while we have this money, and while we have a pool of applicants, we're gonna go back out as far as behavior support. We know that that's very helpful for a lot of our kiddos right now, as well as teachers assistants, so that we have a higher ratio of adult to student, not just substituting. And so we, and this was loud and clear from every one of our admins, they're just, they're working really hard, but they're running. And they're trying to just keep, you know, blocking the dam, you know, filling up the dam. So we said, how can we help? And they're like, we need more bodies, we need staff, we need people. And we know substitutes just aren't there. And so we're committed to going back out and hiring another 64 positions. 38 as teaching assistants. And I just have to give a shout out to our talent department. I know we're frustrated, because we feel like it's moving like mud in terms of people coming on board, but they are processing hundreds. It's, I don't think people recognize the impact. Full in, which is great, has had on staff. It's critical. It's, it's critical. And my building leaders, who I will support 100%, and my, my central office staff, they're all running as fast as they can. So we want to help them, and we're putting in another 64 positions for that. We're hopeful we can fill them all. And it's a two-year experience for someone. Again, we, we have it, so an associate's is fine too. And if we can grab them and help them get into a four-year program, that's part of our, our onboarding and, and just developing a pipeline. It is a lot.
Can I just, just a question?
Sure.
So as you were saying that, I was just going through this list, and I noticed that, you know, three, four, four, four. And then you get to Pulaski, and it's 14 versus Slade making a request for only four. Is it that they didn't identify that they would need as much as Pulaski?
Yes, that would be it.
That would just be it?
That would be it, right. And so we, we had the admins actually tell us. And, and we said to them, you know, the positions that you're currently using for substitutes, what, what is that number? And, and, you know, try to stick to being honest here. And, and so that's what they came up with. I mean, certainly Mike can circle back with Mr. Verdy to say, hey, are you sure? You know, that kind of thing, but, yeah.
So further questions on this item?
Yes, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
HR did law.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you for adding that, I'm sorry about the confusion.
Oh, that was, that was on my, my end.
Do we have any other walk-in, any other items?
I think we went through them all.
Motion to adjourn.
You got another?
No, so we had an updated extracurricular.
Right?
The report, no? It's just the report, yeah. So I just have a question, when is middle, middle school basketball? When, is it after school? No, right, so, but is it the same season as high school?
No, not necessarily. Let me check, I don't want to answer that, I will find out later.
I'll just leave this for you.
So, and then, like, let me know. Oh, so, yeah, but I do want to say to you that we know that all of our coaches are gonna be going over and watching kids and helping coaching, so it will probably be offseason. Okay, you know what I mean? So that it's kind of recruitment and looking for talent. But I will, I will get the...
For later in the year. How we grow.
I'm sorry, while you're making the list. The halal menu, kind of how far out that is, or is there like any...
I'll check for you. We haven't met yet this year for... Yeah, thank you.
Well, let's think of that.
But do you know when it's coming out?
Yeah.
The 19th, there's one in the menus coming out, or next, next meeting?
Oh, I thought you knew that off the top of your head, I was very impressed with that. Yeah, well, we'll find that out on the 19th when we have our meeting. But I could ask Jeff in advance, too.
Yeah, no, 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 because as I have parents that are asking me, and I'm going, I vote no? We've just been told, look, it's a post. Just wait.
Okay. Further, anything else to add to the agenda? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second? All right, we don't even need a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.